Great, good evening. I'd like to call to order the April 13th, 2022 school committee meeting at 5:31 PM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of convening strategies relative to collective bargaining, employee groups, ongoing litigation in personnel matters, the ratification on the school committee side of two additional agreements, successor agreements with employee groups, and approval of prior executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And excuse me, would you...
Bia Joni.
Mrs. Bia Joni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. We will reconvene for our reorganizational meeting at 6 PM. Thank you.
All right.
I'm good.
Thank you, Jason. I'd like to call the April 13, 2022 reorganization meeting to order. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. It's unanimous vote. Welcome, everybody. At this time, I'd like to ask our new school committee members to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Calebia Joni Smith and Mr. Rich Russo for your success in the election to our school committee. We welcome you both and look forward to our working together as you serve on this school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain nominations. I'm sorry, let me go backwards a little bit here. The April 13, 2022 reorganizational meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Okay, well, with that, at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of chairperson of the Tuxbury School Committee.
This is Reagan. Before we get started, I would just like to say to my colleagues, current and former colleagues, thank you for always trusting in me. This is a very difficult job. I think it's real easy to say that and not really have a good understanding. I'm sort of a term limit type of guy. I also realize the importance of when there's good quality people around you, that, you know, other people get to have opportunities more regularly than maybe we've seen in the past. With that, I think we have a wonderful candidate for chair this year, and I would like to nominate Ms. Bridget Garabedian to be the chair of the school committee for the next year.
Okay. Ms. Bridget Garabedian has been placed in nomination. Is there a second?
I will second that nomination.
Well, the motion has been moved by Keith Sullivan and seconded by Nick Parsons on the name of Bridget Garabedian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Garabedian. And Keith? Thank you.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the nomination. I do accept the nomination. I think I'm supposed to officially say that. I'd like to thank you all for believing in me and having support. Thank you to Mr. Sullivan for, you know, showing me how to lead a meeting, and hopefully you'll keep me honest, all of you, with reminders, you know, of call of order, because I think I'm going to need it. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, at this point, do I now leave the question?
At this point...
All right. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion for vice chairperson, but I would like to make a motion, if I can, for Keith Sullivan.
I'll second that motion.
And do we now make a... Do I need a motion to close?
Nominations.
Nominations?
You don't need to. You can. It's completely up to you.
Okay. So, I mean, we have a first and a second on the table, so could I have... All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay. So, the motion passes unanimously, and moving on. Congratulations, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian.
And you do accept?
Yes, I do accept. And don't worry, I will be right here to help and support you with anything that you need.
Thank you.
And I look forward to it, actually.
Thank you.
You'll be wonderful.
Yeah. So, I'd like a motion. Is there a motion to appoint somebody for our clerk position?
Can I just add before we make a motion? Traditionally, the top vote getter, I think, in the previous election is given that honor. So, certainly, it's not a rule or a mandate, but I certainly would like to probably follow along in those lines. And with that, I would like to nominate Mrs. Smith to be our clerk for the upcoming year.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a first and a second, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Please say nay. Okay. And the motion passes unanimously. And at that time, I would like... Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Summum.
Okay. So, we have a first from Mr. Parsons.
I'll second.
And a second from Mr. Russo. We will... So, what time is it?
Reconvene at 6:30.
At 6:10, and then we'll reconvene at 6:30 p.m. for our regular session of school committee meeting.[1090.53]
Okay, welcome. We are reconvening the regular school committee meeting on April 13th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. At this time, I would like to ask everybody to join us in a moment of silence for Angela Kimball. She recently passed away. She was a former principal of the North Street School. She was an employee for 10 years, worked for the district. She loved working with children and supporting families in the Tewksbury Public Schools. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So first, for our announcement, the April 13th, 2022 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on the Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or youtube.com/tewksberrytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask anyone in attendance, if they are recording tonight's meeting, to please identify themselves. Okay, seeing nobody, I would like to move on to welcoming our new members, Mr. Rich Russo and Ms. Kayla Biajomi Smith. Thank you for being here and welcome to the committee. Looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
And I will now move to Mrs. Regan to do some recognition of the Tewksbury Wilmington VFW Post 8164.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. We have some wonderful recognitions tonight. The two gentlemen, who are certainly no stranger to this school committee meeting, I'd like to welcome up to the podium from VFW Post 8164, Mr. Commander of the VFW 8164, Mr. Vinnie Olivia, and the Senior Vice Commander, Mr. Jimmy Williams Senior. Come up to the podium. And the students being recognized, make them up to the podium and just stand to the side of both of our VFW commanders, please. And we have some recognitions for the Patriots Pen Competition and the Voice of Democracy. I'm going to let Mr. Olivia talk about those competitions that we run annually. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting us here tonight. As Gail said, my name is Vinnie Oliver. I am the commander of the Post 8164 here in Tewksbury. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our newest members of the committee. I congratulated you online a couple of weeks ago, and I told you I'd see you soon, so here The VFW is here tonight to acknowledge our first and second place Patriot Pen Essay Contest and our first place Voice of Democracy Post and District winners. The VFW Patriot Pen and Voice of Democracy program is a national essay and audio contest that is conducted annually during the fall term. Both contests are designed to foster patriotism and to give the student the opportunity to voice their opinion and address their responsibility to our country. At this time, I'd like to have our Patriot Pen first and second place winners, Olivia Jensen here and Caitlin Murphy, is she here?
No.
Olivia, I know, this is from the Post, Tewksbury, it's a check for $100, and we have a citation here, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States and Auxiliary Youth Essay Award Citation Presented to Olivia Jensen in sincere appreciation and recognition of valuable cooperation and assistance rendered in behalf of our nation's youth. So Olivia, we congratulate you, and I believe I will see you again at the district banquet, May 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, Olivia's going to read her essay, so.
Excellent.
How can I be a good American? How can I be a good American? To be a good American, we can start out small. We can hold a door for a stranger or help out a neighbor in need. These small things added up will hopefully have a big impact on our country. We also need to learn to respect each other and our differences. Most importantly, we need to learn to be kind. A good American is also a person who treats everyone equally and with kindness. This country has some people not treating each other equally or with kindness, and it needs to stop. I don't want to grow up in a country like this, and it needs to change now. How will treating people equally help our country? If we treat everyone equally and with respect, it can spread across the United States. The COVID-19 virus is not the only thing that is contagious. Equality and kindness are too. If these things spread around our country, it will bring our nation peace and hopefully spread around the world. Even though we may have different beliefs, we should respect that and still find a way to come together. When our nation comes together as one, we are all are happy. If we are all happy, then imagine what everything would be like. If you treat someone equally with kindness and with respect, they will treat others like that too. Amelia Earhart once said, "A single act of kindness throws out roots in all directions, and the roots spring up and make new trees." This quote is saying that if you do random active kindness or treat someone with respect, treat someone with respect, others will follow. Then it will create more happiness. Being a good American can start out as little as smiling at someone you don't know. These small things can lead to big changes. If you treat people equally with respect and kindness, then it will spread across the nation. So, take a minute and ask yourself, how will you be a good American?
Now we know why she was picked first place for the Post and the District. She did awesome.
Mr. Oliveria, we also have something to read, and are we getting a resolution of recognition? So I'm not sure where you want to fit that in.
For who?
For Olivia. For your author.
Oh, okay, sure, all right. Yeah, all right, you want to do it now?
Sure.
Bring Olivia back up to the podium, and Olivia, I'm going to ask you this.
Yeah.
It comes out from Jason, can you see Olivia? Can we move a little apart?
All right.
All right. Patriots Pen Essay Competition for Grade 6 through 8, and whereas Olivia Jensen, a sixth grade student at the John Ryan Elementary School, submitted her Patriots Pen Essay on "How Can I Be a Good American?" to the Tewksbury VFW Post 8164. And whereas Olivia won the post level competition and advanced to the district level, placing first and finished sixth at the state level competition. And whereas Olivia has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, her family, to the Ryan Elementary School and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Olivia Jensen. So, congratulations.
Okay. Our Voice of Democracy winner is not here, I believe. Ms. Bunyan? Okay. Ms. Bunyan, who was our Patriot Democracy winner at the post level, the district level, and she came in fourth at the state level, so she did awesome. She got a good, I think maybe around $1,400 from the state, $150 from us, and three, I believe it was three-something from the district, so she did well.
That's fantastic.
Our other Patriot Pen, Kevin Murphy, he's from the Wind School, and he didn't make it tonight either. But he's got, he come in second, post level and district, so. Yeah, we'll go to the school and just give it to him then in front of the principal.
We have a whereas for those students as well that we'll deliver. If you want to coordinate that with us, Mr. Olivia, we'll do that together.
Sure, all right. The Patriot Pen, people ask me all the time, what is the Patriots Pen program? Conducted nationwide, the VFW sponsors the Youth Essay Competition, gives students an opportunity to write essays expressing their views. They usually wait a couple of months after the state convention to put out the next year's themes. We got them early. Patriot Pen for next year, 2022-2023 theme is My Pledge to Our Veterans. So I will be sending them out to the schools I deal with and that will be, that's also on the vfw.org page, so. The Voice of Democracy, since 1947, the Voice of Democracy has been the Veterans of Foreign Wars premier scholarship program. Each year, nearly 80,000 high school students compete for more than $2 million in scholarships and incentives. Students compete by writing and recording an audio essay on an annual patriotic theme. This year's theme is Why Is a Veteran Important? Two good subjects. So I'd like to congratulate all three of the winners and to all students, your voice is America's future. Tewksbury's done well over the last four or five years. Either we came in first, second, or third. The last couple of years, we came first and second. I think it was maybe three years ago, we took all three and that was, that was an awesome year for Tewksbury. So, to our teachers, thank you for the time, effort, and commitment you invest each year in America's young people. Because of you, our community continues to produce scholars, dreamers, and leaders who benefit the entire world. I cannot end without thanking Kathleen Anderson, who was instrumental in having Patriot Pen such a success in Tewksbury. Kathleen, are you here? Come on upstairs. Kathleen's been on doing this, helping me out with the Patriot Pen for the last five or six years. And every year, she gets me at least 2,000 applicants and that's awesome. I mean, between her and the other teachers now, she's got them involved. I just have to recognize her as well. And I want to present her with a certificate. She didn't see this coming, so she's just. Veterans of Foreign Wars in this auxiliary awards the citation to Kathleen Anderson as an expression of sincere appreciation and full praise for the patriotic service granted to the community. Kathleen, thank you so much. I appreciate everything you do. Okay, once again, School Committee, I thank you very much for having us here and hopefully I'll see you next year. Oh, way before then, I hope, but thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Oliveria and Mr. Williams, thank you so much for being here. I think it's a fantastic program.
Thank you.
And thank you to Mrs. Anderson as well and the other teachers that helped to support this program, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, have a good night.
Okay, and moving on now, I would like to again come back to you, Mrs. Regan, for our next item with DECA. Did you want to introduce our?
I do. We have some other amazing students to recognize tonight, our DECA team. If our DECA team could take both sides of that podium, I'm going to also invite up your advisor, Mr. James Sullivan, teacher here at the Tewksbury Memorial High School, longtime DECA advisor. If you remember at the last meeting, you approved these students going to the state DECA competition. These four students are champions at that competition. They've now qualified for the DECA International Competition, which will be in Atlanta, Georgia. So once they're recognized and honored for their accomplishments, I asked the board at your pleasure to just cap that with an approval for them to travel out of state. What I'll tell you is this, we approved this last time with that caveat that if they won, they could go to that international championship. It hasn't happened in a while because of the pandemic, so I'm so proud that we have four students going this year. I can guarantee you when we're done hearing about their accomplishments, Mr. Sullivan has shared the details, the itinerary, the costs for the trip, the COVID protocols, the parent permission slips, and the chaperone information and flight information already with all of the parents. So all those details are intact, but right now, the floor is yours. Mr. Sullivan, please tell us how you guys became champions of that state tournament.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Regan, and congratulations to our two new board members and in your reorganization today, to the Madam Chairperson. So congratulations to everybody and to Mrs. Regan in her new position. I haven't, obviously haven't been here, but before I recognize these four students, I just want to touch upon Jack, who unfortunately didn't qualify for the International Conference, but Jack Sadman is the first TMHS student in the history of our DECA program, which started way back when with Mrs. Bass theory. I'm not even sure what year that was.
1987.
I think it was even before then. I think Mr. Russo was a member of DECA when I started as a substitute here back in the late 90s, but I know when I was here in 88, the program was running. I think it started in around the 70s, to be honest with you. But Jack is the first four-year state qualifier that we've ever had at Tewksbury High School, so I want to make sure I point that out and recognize Jack. I know we don't have anything special for him today, but I did want to recognize him for that and acknowledge him for that, so tremendous accomplishment. In addition for qualifying, Jack was one of our other students at Tewksbury High School at that conference that finished as a top 10 qualifier from Tewksbury, along with Ally Costello and Courtney Capicciari, Lexi Waterworth and Eliana Kennon, and Maeve Cahill, Loganoff, and Caden Connors, who was racing back and forth from practices and games with the hockey team, as were six other hockey players that were at the DECA Conference in Boston for those three days. So a whole lot of kudos to go out to a whole lot of people and the parents of the hockey players who did a great job getting the kids back and forth. And so it was a great weekend for our entire program. As far as the four in front of you today, we have Mia Gaglione and Ava Gilligan, who qualified as state champions in first place in their section in the Project Management Community Giving Project, which was a result of our annual fashion show, which this year raised over $17,000. So a tremendous effort by them to lead and direct alongside Jack as well, who helped contribute in that direction of running the fashion show this year, to be able to raise so much money. In addition to running the fashion show and all of the work that that took, they, the two of them then went forward and wrote a 20-page paper and then did a presentation in front of a judge at the state conference, which again, they finished as first place in state champions, which qualified them. Their category, I believe, had 36 other teams in their event area, so a tremendous accomplishment. John Regalino and Michael Sullivan competed in the Business Law and Ethics Team Decision-Making Event, where they take a test, they take a 100-question multiple-choice exam independently that they did here after school one day. Then when we went to the conference, they do two role plays where they blindly get a role play handed to them. They have 30 minutes to sit, read the role play, digest it, understand it, come up with a solution to it, and there's a grading rubric on it that determines how they answer questions and how completely they answer them, and a judge fills that out for the two separate role plays. So they did that twice and the two of them finished in first place in their category to become state champions. I'm not going to lie, something I never imagined in a million years, being a teacher, being the DECA advisor, having my son and my other son who did it last year, but having both of my sons in the program, very honestly and respectfully to them, never thought that that would happen. So it was a pretty good father-son moment, I'm not going to lie. It was a slobbery mess after it happened, but that's how they qualified in the Business Law and Ethics category. So it's a great weekend for all of them. We're really looking forward to the International Conference and them competing amongst 20,000 other people at the International Conference. So it's exciting, it's exciting for them. We'll travel, we travel kind of as a delegation of Massachusetts. The whole DECA thing goes from the district conference at UMass Lowell, where we've had Rich and we've had Keith as judges in the past, where everybody's kind of like their own school. Then when we go to the states in Boston, everyone kind of is rooting for their district. And then we go to the International Conference, all the Massachusetts people will be rooting for people from Massachusetts. So we'll have a nice, tight bond with Barica that we started with that leadership and leadership program between the two schools and all of the other schools from Massachusetts participating, so.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your continued support of our students, all of our students. These four happen to be the four that did the best and qualified, but on behalf of the 71 students that we had qualify or that we had participate in DECA this year, we all, I want to thank all of you for your continued support and all of our teachers, because it's not just in the business classes, it's what they learn in all of their classes and what they do in all of them. So it's kudos to everybody.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Russo has a recognition.
Madam Chair, may I have a second before Mr. Russo presents? I would like to obviously congratulate everyone, but I want to make sure we get to the order of business while they're here so they can go home and lay their head softly on the pillows tonight and be prepared. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve an out-of-state trip to our qualifying students to participate in the International DECA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? So the motion passes and enjoy Atlanta. Thank you for representing Tewksbury.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So as Mr. Sullivan said, this is something that's a little near and dear to my heart, so I'm honored to be able to present this, a resolution of recognition. Whereas Tewksbury Memorial High School DECA Club competed at the 63rd Mass DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston, March 10th through March 12th. And whereas TMHS DECA students had a successful showing and enjoyed competing with DECA members of their peers in other districts. And whereas Ms. Mia Gaglione and Ms. Ava Gilligan were named state champions in the Project Management Community Giving Event category and qualified for the DECA International Career Development Conference, April 22nd through April 26, 2022, in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas Mr. John Regalino and Mr. Michael Sullivan were named state champions in the Business Law and Ethics Team Decision-Making Event category and qualified for the DECA International Career Development Conference, April 22nd through April 26, 2022, in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas Mia, Ava, John, and Michael exemplify the qualities inherent of exceptional students and members of the DECA Club and have brought great pride, recognition, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, and to Tewksbury Memorial High School and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts and accomplishments of Mia Gaglione, Ava Gilligan, John Regalino, and Michael Sullivan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Sadman, the floor is yours.
Thanks, again.
I'm not sure if people realize this is your final meeting with us?
Yes, this is it.
Yeah, everybody's enjoyed having you, so.
I appreciate that.
After your report, if anybody has any comments for Jack, please.
Well, good evening as always, School Committee members, and welcome to everyone new on the board. All seniors who are eligible for senior project as of last Thursday have left school completely and have started their senior projects. Stay tuned until late May, early June to see the results of their hard work. The TMHS Drama Group, as you can hear them outside, is putting on their production of Mamma Mia. The first showing is on April 28th and is running until the 30th. Make sure you can see it while you can. Over the past month, students have had the opportunity to enter donations to win a raffle, to win raffle baskets. The winner has been announced over the next few days. All the proceeds will go to help the efforts in Ukraine. As always, the TMHS Morning Update is running strong every morning. You can tune in on YouTube to catch the latest in school news. As this week comes to a close, students are anxiously waiting for April vacation. The weather is certainly shaping up in their favor. Members of the Student Council were elected recently into new positions, including my own. I'll be replaced by a good sophomore who will treat my position with much respect. If you're interested in joining, please see Ms. Glass. The International Club has planned their outdoor cleaning day last week and worked to pick up trash and unnatural debris in the area. They will be planning another one mid-May. Students of the class of 2022 that are interested in participating in Senior Week events must be sure to pay all of their class dues and also hand in the proper permission forms before getting in their tickets. Permission forms can be found either in their email or in person with Ms. Pilat. And that is it for my final School Committee update. Thank you very much all these years. I appreciate it.
Jack, we appreciate it. Education, for a presentation.
Madam Chairman, if I could grab that mic, thank you. I'd like to just do a little intro for Mr. Pelletier. You may remember that in 2018, Chapter 272 of the Acts of 2018, otherwise referred to as the Dyslexia Law was passed, in that fall of 2018, we formed a professional learning community, otherwise known as a PLC, comprised of reading specialists, moderate special education teachers, speech and language educators, case manager and administrators, myself, Mr. Pelletier. And that spring of 2019, the PLC completed an analysis of data on dyslexia focusing on our special education students and improving their reading. That's when we brought in Spire, I, Spire, and you supported the purchase of that program. You know, 2019 and '20 were busy for us as well implementing Spire. Certainly we were rewarded with those efforts as we continued using it, but more in a hybrid online platform throughout those years during the pandemic. But from fall of 2021 to present, the Spire Intensive Reading Program continues to be very, very effective for our most struggling readers, our students with dyslexia. I just wanted to also mention, along with that analysis and the work with that PLC, you know, this is how we brought forth and you also funded foundations, lips training for our teachers, V and V, I think you guys saw a little V and V when you toured the schools, visualization and verbalization and seeing stars. At the last school committee meeting, you really did see a little bit of a cap on that whole process as we seek to improve our K-6 literacy program, maintain these new tools, but also bring in a stronger reading program that meets the needs of all students. So Mr. Pelletier is going to share with you. If you remember throughout the school year, you saw the PD on dyslexia survey, working with Mass General Hospital, and Mr. Pelletier is going to give you some of the results of that work so far this year. Mr. Pelletier?
Good evening, School Committee, Board Chairwoman. This is Garbidi.
Thank you.
And to our current and newly elected board members. Thank you, Mrs. Terry Oregan for the introduction. The Special Education Department, in collaboration and working in conjunction with building administrators, have been working to build a foundation in spelling and in reading for all elementary students. And so last month, you heard from Mrs. Chenanovic, and she talked about the adoption of literacy instructional materials, and she also spoke about ELA curriculum. And I want you to know that the Special Ed Department has been, has worked to align the district literacy initiatives over the past several years with specific focus on developing a more comprehensive and explicitly approached specialized instruction. So in order for children to read, they must be able to develop fluent word reading and language comprehension. Last month, Mrs. Chenanovic talked about the foundational skills that are needed for that. The fluent word reading stems from underlying foundational skills in phonological awareness, phonics, decoding, and in automatic word recognition. This is also applicable to students who have developmental learning. This is also applicable to students who have developmental learning or developmental language disorder, which is a type of speech, communication, and language that affects the way they learn to, or try to understand and also use language. So here, the team is comprised, if we're talking about interprofessional knowledge, it's really comprised of general ed, special education teachers, speech and language pathologists, reading specialists, even occupational therapists have a role in developing literacy for our students. And although about 50%, approximately 50% of students with dyslexia also possibly have DLD, the truth in reverse as well. And also, the interprofessional piece here, where faculty come together to work together and focusing on the student, that interprofessional knowledge, bringing their skill set to each child, will make a difference in targeting interventions for each student. So in 2020, we did partner with, Tewksbury Public Schools did partner with Speech Language or CL Literacy Lab, which is MGH Institute of Health Professions. It's under the direction of Dr. Tiffany Hogan and also Dr. Rosanna Komasudu, who are researchers through Harvard, and they also do NIH research studies. So we're very fortunate to have a partnership with them. I'm really pleased about that. The primary objective in partnering with them was to really identify and promote the interprofessional collaboration piece, to strengthen our knowledge and our awareness about dyslexia and DLD, but also to really pinpoint assessments, instruction, and intervention through professional development. It's also our goal, it's always our goal, to increase awareness, because this is not just about special ed, it's about all students. And we are, of course, a special ed department focused on our specialized population and for our students with dyslexia and developmental learning disabled students. However, it is applicable to all students in terms of what we're trying to do through the special ed department and how it aligns with the literacy initiatives that the district is taking. So if we take a team-based model, which is what we're doing, and using the data analysis to provide the targeted interventions for the struggling learners, we will see our benchmarks increase. And we are seeing success in our Spire program, particularly for the intensive special ed need student. So we have provided a number of professional development areas, intra-professional collaboration. This includes language and literacy. We provided an overview of dyslexia and DLD, and we presented case studies from our own district to examine the language barriers and how to provide targeted interventions. We also hope to have a fourth professional development later this year, which will focus on evidence-based intervention and also provide dyslexia presentations. These, all the presentations that I've talked about, the professional development, have also been presented to parents and families. We've held multiple workshops, evening workshops with our families. MGH attended, and they did present on dyslexia to our families in user-friendly language, which they also had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, and we had a relatively good turnout for that. I think it was about 30 families that attended. So why do we do a survey? We're doing a survey because we also want to develop a strategic plan for the special ed department and how we move forward, how we align what we're doing, along with the initiatives of the district. So we know where we have been and we know where we currently are, but we want to develop a path for tomorrow and beyond. So the survey will assist us in developing more routine practices around the interprofessional collaboration with a particular focus on faculty knowledge, awareness, training, their roles and responsibilities, that sort of thing. The survey was also, by the way, it was administered to the faculty in the fall of 2021, with the bulk of the participants taking the survey on the last professional development of the year, right before the holiday break. And we were not expecting the results that we got, which were really positive. It's one thing to be able to check off a box, but our faculty actually took time to write out personal reflections and what they really believed in terms of statements that really led to a really good initial report that we did obtain today, and we're not keeping it away from anybody just yet. It is a research-based paper, and for that reason, we did develop, or we noticed that 23 paraprofessionals who work with our autism population actually took the survey. So they kind of skewed our data results. So we are working with MGH to fix the report, and then we'll share that out. And we, the meeting will happen on the 25th or the 27th later this month. So the survey, it did focus on six topics: training, knowledge about oral language and written development and disorders, roles and responsibilities, current collaborative practices, district resources, and then also additional perspectives from our faculty. The survey really validated what our staff are building, that they're building the knowledge and skills with the collaboration. And we're also doing that through high-quality professional development. And the high-quality professional development is really meant to increase the engagement and the formal learning opportunities for our students, but also for our faculty. So the district is trending in the right direction, that's up, not down, in this, better understanding of evidence-based assessment practices for dyslexia and developmental learning disorder. And we are able to demonstrate that through our assessments. And I won't get into the bulk of the assessments that we use, but we do use the FIFER assessment for reading, which is a relatively new assessment that we've introduced about three years ago to the district. And it really provides more detailed information on targeting specific areas that the student requires in order to obtain a literacy proficiency that we are comfortable with. So what we learned and our next steps. So I took this directly from the initial report. What I will say is, the development of the questionnaire took about five months, maybe six months, and then the implementation of it took place in the late fall. So a lot of the report, what I can report to is that we actually are providing a lot of training opportunities to our faculty and to our teachers and to our related service providers. But we also need to focus more on oral and written language development. The oral language part of the assessment is showing up in terms of evidence-based literature, that it is one of the areas that focus on dyslexia. So if a student is deficient in oral reading or oral language component of an assessment like the Wyatt or the Wisk, then that's a red flag for us to pinpoint a little bit more, to look for evidence-based information so that we can structure the instruction for the student in a targeted manner. So we are already, our efforts in terms of tiered interventions, as Mrs. Reagan stated earlier, foundations is up and running. Our faculty have been actually praising the foundations, which is wonderful to have this phonemic awareness and phonics program in the district. It certainly feeds into the special ed realm. We also use the visualization and verbalization at the tiered two, but also at the tiered three. And visualization and verbalization is to build comprehension. And this is a subcomponent of the Lyndhamood Bell Program, also known as LIPS. We're also doing ongoing professional development to include workshops in Spire. We have a teacher at the North Street School who does weekly Spire chats and provides an amazing vast array of resources for the teachers. She has been a real focal point for her colleagues. And if anything came out of good out of this pandemic and being remote, is our K-5, K-6 faculty have really collaborated in this interprofessional way to talk about the reading literacy needs of our students. And it really introduced faculty who had never met each other prior to the pandemic. So next steps. We intend to continue our partnership with MGH CL Literacy Lab, and they are providing us with the interventions. But more importantly, we really like the case studies that we are able to bring to the table. And then also, the ones that are really perplexing, like the one that we provided last week to MGH, is a really complicated case where the student is just not progressing to where we believe that child needs to be. So they're doing more of a forensic analysis on the reports that we've provided to them. And then we hope to also meet with them so that we can discuss the planning for professional development and the treatment and interventions for this particular student, but also for all students. We're very fortunate that we have Landmark Outreach Program to consult with us. They're doing also a lot of professional development. They've been particularly this past year at the Ryan School, and they will be there again tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
I can't believe that we're already at the 14th of April. And so that partnership will focus on providing the interventions within the classroom, but also how to intervene in a substantially separate classroom. It's not the same as inclusion or co-taught. It's actually bringing the literacy piece and the standards to an instructional point for all students in the classroom, particularly those with dyslexia or DLD. WestEd, we are going to continue with them. They have been providing co-teaching strategies and methodologies. They're here at the high school this year. The high school staff approached Mrs. Reagan last summer, and she pulled me in and said, "Try to make this happen," and we were able to make that happen for the high school. And the results from that have been really, really positive, and we do have a published report on that as well. It is my genuine hope that we are able to get Melissa Orkin, who is one of the co-founders of Crafting Minds. Melissa Orkin, along with Dr. Hogan of MGH, among others, were spearheaded the dyslexia component to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the dyslexia piece on that website is created by people that we're working with directly. Another really wonderful outcome to all of this is when we partnered with Landmark, we had no knowledge that they were also conducting research with Mass General CL Literacy Lab. And so to learn that recently was really a nice pairing, because it really gives us the most current research to apply really good literacy strategies for our students. So thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much for being here. I will open this up to the committee. Any thoughts or comments, Mr. Sullivan? I'll start with you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm obviously looking forward to seeing the survey when you get there. Thank you for the very thorough presentation, and I'll probably reserve my comments for when we actually get to see the survey that you received today. So thank you very much.
And I believe MGH would be glad to sit in front of the school committee to present their findings as well, if that's something that you're interested in.
Sounds great. And anything for you, Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give a big thanks to Mr. Pelletier's central office and Superintendent Reagan. Should be really proud of the progress we're taking toward addressing something like dyslexia or intervening to support students. That's great to hear. When those reports are available, could they be shared with the committee?
Yes, they will be shared with the committee as well as the CPAC, and they're also posted on our webpage.
Excellent. And thank you so much.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Like my fellow members here, I just wanted to thank you for the work that you're doing on this as well. And you just addressed it a moment ago. I was going to ask if you would share the results with the CPAC and make sure that that community has an option to, opportunity to maybe ask questions or provide some feedback on that as well.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Russo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pelletier, this is excellent work. I guess just one quick question. The partnerships with MGH and Landmark, how long are those partnerships intended to last for? And then, I guess, secondly, are they grant-funded or are they going to be, you know, continue to be funded?
Great question. So these professional and experts in the field do come with a cost, but I'm glad to report that it's all grant-covered. And I think that's really important to state that to the committee. These are all grant-funded. I've not asked for any money. I won't, I promise, for this anyway. And we do continue to look, I do believe that our grants will be able to fund this as well moving into the future. So our partnership will be long-term with both MGH and also with Landmark. We're looking to commit five years in this process. We're in our seventh year with WestEd. We did take a pause year because of the pandemic, and we also wanted to take a pause, it was a natural pause, to see how our faculty have continued to implement the collaborative teaching methods that they have learned. And it's a great report. They have been doing exactly what they had been coached and trained on. So it's, you know, all of this is made possible by our faculty. First and foremost, that's where it starts. They're doing a wonderful job. I really do believe that our faculty, if they're provided the right supports with high-quality professional development, they really do step up to the plate, and they go above and beyond their regular day. And I see that every day when faculty are staying after work hours and talking about dyslexia, because it's really a hot topic.
Mr. Pelletier, and actually just to follow up, are you finding that it's more of a hot topic recently more because of the pandemic and especially sort of those critical reading and writing ages at the younger grade levels where, you know, kids were remote and kids were wearing masks in schools and, you know, they couldn't pick up on some of the cues that you would have traditionally seen pre-pandemic or what you can see today, right? Is it, are you finding that that's more of a concern from your standpoint?
So we haven't observed that just yet.
Okay.
We do know that all students have had some unfinished learning as a result of the pandemic. With our Spire group, for instance, we did have an online platform, as Ms. Reagan had talked about, and we were able to maintain the systematic approach to the instruction, which was wonderful. And we also were able to continue with the professional development for that. However, I will say that our numbers are increasing in special ed. I did meet with regional directors who are also affiliated with the Valley Collaborative, and we are all noticing that special ed numbers are trending up.
Thank you.
Okay. So and then finally, my only comment was, in terms of professional development, is that typically materials that they provide or are they available in person or is there any?
So that's another good question. We prefer in-person whenever we can. So we actually started meeting with MGH in 2018, in the late winter actually, or early winter, right as soon as we, the Department of Ed, on October of 2018 acknowledged that this was a new law that was mandated by the legislature. So we started our partnerships and tried to find the experts that we have now today. So it has been virtual because of the pandemic, but it's also in-person. And they, Landmark has been in-person with the Ryan School, and we are looking forward to getting MGH once their facility approves in-person training. That's what we'll do.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being here.
You're welcome. And also, the WestEd is also, has been in-person.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And next, I'd like to, once Mr. Pelletier has completed, to invite Mrs. Presser back up to the podium. And you're welcome to come to the presentation podium if that's easier. We appreciate you coming back.
Happy to be here.
Yep. And there's several members in the audience here today from the search committee. So thank you all for coming as well.
So I'm here tonight to tell you, update you on the search, tell you who the finalists are. And I thought because there's a couple of new members, I would sort of start back and recap what's happened so far. In February, the search started. I met with the committee. We talked about the type of candidate that the committee was looking for, developed some advertising. And along with that, we did a survey with the community to get some idea for the community, what they saw were the strengths, the challenges of the Tewksbury Public Schools, what they thought the next superintendent would need to be successful. That information was part of what the search committee used as they were formulating questions for the candidate and some of the information that the school committee will have moving forward with the search. At the same time that survey was going on and the position was being advertised, the school committee put together a preliminary screening committee, a search committee, that once the, once the application period closed, that search committee took over, looked at all the applications, decided who to interview, and then bring forward to the school committee as finalists. And that's where we are tonight. So there were 21 applications that were received. The screening committee decided to bring in six of those people for interviews. And from that six interviews, they have decided to bring forward to you four finalists. So there is a full application package of the finalists that Ms. Johnson has for you later on. And I need to tell you that the, only the resumes of the finalists are considered public information. The rest of the information is for the school committee, but not for the public. And Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson has copies of just the resumes in case the public press or public wants that access to that information. So any questions? Or would you like to hear who your finalists are?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
I just want to add too, that I really enjoyed working with, with the screening committee. It was 12 members of the community. Many of them, I think about half of them are here tonight. And we had some good, as Ms. Garabedian will attest, some very robust, good discussion, great interviews with the candidates. I think the candidates felt welcome to Tewksbury. And then there was some really good conversation afterwards to decide who to bring to the school committee. So in alphabetical order, the finalists are, first of all, Mr. Brent Conway. He is currently the Assistant Superintendent in the Penticott Regional School District, where he's been since 2018. Prior to being in Penticott, he served as the principal, as a principal in the Melrose Public Schools, a middle school principal from 2014 to 2018, and an elementary principal from 2007 to 2014. He spent two years as an elementary assistant principal in Tingsborough, and four years as a middle school teacher in Chelmsford. Mr. Conway holds a master's in education management and leadership from Pittsburgh State, two bachelor's degrees, one in elementary education and one in communications studies from University of Rhode Island. He's in a doctoral program at the University of Southern Mississippi with an expected completion date of 2024. The next finalist is Ms. Darcy Fernandez. She is currently the superintendent in Athol Royalston, where she's been since 2017. Prior to that, she was the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning in Randolph from 2013 to 2017. She was a principal of the Roosevelt Middle School in New Bedford from 2018 to 2013, interim principal at West Junior High in Brockton from 2005 to 2008, a middle school social studies teacher in Wareham from 94 to 2005. Ms. Fernandez holds a master's in educational leadership from Framingham State and a bachelor's in history and secondary education from Elms College. She's in a doctoral program at Leslie University with an expected completion of, in the fall of 2022. The third finalist is Ms. Nan Murphy. She is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning in Marblehead. Prior to that, she spent a year at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as statewide system of support assistance leave. From 2017 to 2019, she was the Director of Accountability and School Improvement in Lowell, and an elementary principal in Lowell from 2009 to 2017. She's also been assistant principal in Lowell and an elementary teacher in both Wilmington, Massachusetts, and in North Carolina. Ms. Murphy holds a master's in educational leadership from Gordon College and a bachelor's degree in both elementary education, bachelor's degrees in both elementary and education and psychology from Trinity College in Vermont. She's currently enrolled at the Harvard School of Business, pursuing a certificate of management and, certificate of school management and leadership. And I do need to tell you that last night she was also named as a finalist in Marlboro.
Sorry, what was her first name?
Nan.
Yeah.
And last, a familiar name, the last finalist alphabetically, is Brenda Regan. As you know, she is currently your interim superintendent as well as your assistant superintendent. She's held the assistant superintendent role since 2014. She also works at DESI, supporting the department's work in tiered focus monitoring and MCAS math assessment development. Prior to serving as the assistant superintendent here, she was the principal of Tewksbury Memorial High School from 2012 to 2014, assistant principal at the John Ryan Elementary School from 2009 to 2012. Starting to get my tongue twisted around the years here. And she was a teacher at the Ryan from 2000 to 2009. Ms. Regan holds a certificate of advanced graduate studies from American International College, a master's in education from Pittsburgh State, a bachelor's in human development with dual certification in elementary education and early childhood education from Leslie College. Any questions before I have questions for you?
I'll start on this side. Ms. Smith?
No questions for me at this time.
Mr. Russo?
No questions right now.
Mr. Sullivan?
My only question, the finalist was named, what town was that? I'm sorry. One of the finalists, Ms. Murphy?
Where is she now?
No, I believe you said she was named-
Oh, she's in Marlboro.
Marlboro.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She works in Marblehead, and she's a finalist in Marlboro, and I keep-
Marlboro. Okay. That was my only question.
And Mr. Parsons?
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you.
And before we move on, I just would really like to acknowledge the committee. I think I was so pleasantly surprised by how well people work together, the diversity within the committee in terms of, you know, people representing their own stakeholders. I appreciate anybody who applied, but I think this committee, I'm really proud of the outcome, and I'm proud of the people that work together. And I just want to recognize who they are. It was myself representing school committee, Judy McGinnis, who was the principal for the John Ryan Elementary, Peter Malloy, who's a teacher at TMHS, Julie Taggart, a teacher at the Heathbrook Elementary, Emily Noel, teacher at the John Wynn, Rick Pelletier, Director of Student Services and SPED, Harsha Powell, who was a student in the 11th grade, who was fantastic, Danielle Newell, a parent, Lisa Wilson, also a parent, Chrissy Palomino, a parent, Ray Bowden was our community member representative, and Gina Cueva. So thank you all very, very much for all your hard work. And it was a little bit of time. So, thank you.
A little bit of time. So from here, where do we go from here? Right? Now it's time to have site visits and final interviews, and then make your decision. So on our calendar for the search, we reserve the week after April vacation and the first week in May for site visits and interviews. Site visits generally happen in both directions. So the school committee is going to visit the candidate's district. And just to let you know, whenever we have an internal finalist, we want to make sure that they stay on equal footing with everyone else. So even though it sounds a little awkward to say, there are site visits for the internal candidate in both directions as well. It gives the school committee and the community an opportunity to see that person maybe in a different light than they usually think about them. So we want to make sure that happens as well. So the site visits to the candidate's district are done by the school committee, as many people as can go. It doesn't have to be everybody. It doesn't have to be the same people all the time, but if there is at least one person who's consistent, it can be really helpful. The people that go then bring the information that they garnered from the site visit back to the rest of the school committee as part of the information you're gathering in your deliberations and decision-making. The candidates generally spend a day in the district. They spend the day talking to, maybe talking to people in the central office, visiting some of the schools. Generally, usually at the end of the school day, there are some meet and greets. So teachers that may not have seen them during a walk-through get a chance to have a meet and greet, a meet and greet with the community. Most school committees prefer to interview the candidates at the end of that day. So there would be four evenings when you would, the school committee would be interviewing the candidates. Sometimes school committees, you know, decide maybe they'll do more than one on a night, or kind of bunch them all in one area. But I tend to think of, because superintendents have a long day, if you have that interview at the end of the day, it's kind of an audition for how they can handle a long day. So if you can swing four nights, I think that that would be the way I would think you might want to lean. So the decisions, so generally, I spend some time arranging with the administrative assistant, how the programs will work in the visits of the candidate to Tewksbury. You know, generally, we outline a day, and that day gets replicated four times. For the visits to, for the school committee visits to the candidate, I need to know who you would like to see when you're in the district. And I think you've got to pack it ahead of time. I kind of outlined how site visits work a little bit. I call the candidate and say, here's who the school committee would like to see, and then invite them to arrange the day for your visit there. Those visits usually are during the school day. The visits of the candidate to Tewksbury, the school committee's not really a part of that unless you're attending the community meet and greet. So part of the reason we can compact this a bit is that the school committee can be visiting one candidate while another candidate might, one candidate's district while another candidate might be here, if that makes sense.
So just to clarify, what I'm understanding is that the school committee would travel to or be in district for a site visit for somebody, while another candidate travels to Tewksbury. And then we would return to Tewksbury and attend meet and greets in the evening.
Meet and greet and interview.
And interview.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. That makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else sort of question?
Yeah, I guess maybe just for clarification purposes. So the candidate would be arranging the site visit on their end after we provide a list of who we would like to meet as a committee. I guess just for internal purposes here, where our current interim superintendent is a candidate, who would be sort of, I guess, organizing that here on this end for when a candidate will be coming here to visit?
Probably Gail Johnson.
Okay. Okay. Great.
I mean, whether there's an internal candidate or not, it's usually that position-
Position, okay.
-that's doing a lot of the legwork to make sure it happens.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. And you're looking at the 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th?
Yes. I'm sort of thinking maybe nobody's going to want a site visit on the first day back from April vacation. I see a teacher there saying, no, 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 no. And we also reserve some, we also reserve the first week in May. We had both those weeks with time on the schedule for that. So we don't have to do them Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday necessarily. We can use time into the next.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out the, and just remind the board of the special town election, I mean, a special town meeting, an annual town meeting that happened, May 2nd and May 4th.
Fourth.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are in the evening.
So those two days would be off the table for evening events?
Yeah.
And I believe there's also a high school play one night, or a Thursday night and Friday night?
So 28th and 29th? Yeah. So the high school play is 29:30, and then there's a Wynn school play, 28:29 I think. I have it backwards, but-
So I guess maybe if I could just ask for clarity, obviously, the intent is to have whichever finalist is chosen to begin their tenure, it's beginning July 1st. Obviously, we want to give the candidate time to prepare, their exit in their current district, among getting things ready here internally in Tewksbury, at our school district. Are we locked in where there are a lot of things sort of at play during that two-week window? Are we locked in, or is there room if that window extended a bit? Just given some of the events that are occurring over those two weeks, over that two-week period?
You're not, I mean, it's your calendar. You're not locked in. We did try to create the calendar to give that exactly the time that you're talking about.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, no, once the candidate is named, you need to negotiate a contract.
Of course.
Right? And no one is really going to give notice-
Until that.
-until they have a signed contract. So if you really want them to be able to start as, lie first as, or as close as possible, you want to kind of keep your foot on the gas pedal as much as you can.
Okay.
Yes.
Through you to Dorothy. So it sounds like to me, the day we have the meet and greet, we should have that superintendent from another district, have the meet and greet, and then do the interview?
If, yeah, if you can, if you can do that, yeah. Yep.
So, and that's, you recommend, in your experience, to do that on four different days?
Yep.
Are those official school committee meetings? Are they special meetings?
Oh, yes. Everything from here is an open meeting. The interviews take place in public.
Sure.
Your deliberation of who the next superintendent would be takes place in public. So yes, those are regular school committee meetings.
I'm just trying to think for us so we can all wrap our heads around. The four most important dates that we need is to have those four people here. And some of us may even go to another district that day and come back. But it sounds like to me, what we need to address is figure out what those four dates are, because those people are going to come regardless, correct? I mean, no one's going to say, I can't make that day, I would assume.
Well, I mean, they do have days on their calendar where they may already have commitments.
Sure.
So we're trying to balance quite a number of people's calendars. So, but there's four of them. So they're not necessarily all going to have an obligation on the same day to knock it out, right? So we can play around with-
And my last question, have you ever seen, maybe have two people come into a site visit on the same day?
I have not seen that, no. No. So I have seen the inability to have the interviews happen on four different nights. So you might have two nights where you have interviews, and someone has to come back for an interview. It's a long night for the school committee.
Sure.
But if, I mean, that's a possibility, too, if there's not four nights that are available in that window.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. That's okay?
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
When we go to a site to visit, how long of a, how long should that visit be, would you recommend?
It's, well, it's usually most of a school day. You get there sort of, you want to not get there when the school day is just starting, right? But it's usually most of a school day. You probably spend 45 minutes to an hour with different groups of people that come in and talk to you. It might be until early afternoon. There are school committees who say, we've only got half a day, and compact it into that, if that's, you know, and they still get good information. So.
Okay.
And you would recommend, would we accompany a candidate when they site visit here as well?
No.
No?
No. That's, the only part of the site visit that you're really involved in is the, if school committee members choose to participate in the meet and greet and the interview.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have one more question. On the meet and greet, is that something that the school committee sets up to arrange? Is it an hour or so before the meeting? Is it a separate location? How does the meet and greet work?
I mean, generally, again, I rely on the district to kind of help that happen. It's usually in, not always in the same location. Some, and sometimes it's immediately before. Sometimes it's in the late afternoon, and then you give the candidate a bit of a greet- it's in the late afternoon, and then you give the candidate a bit of a great break before their interview. There's really no way that it has to happen or even that it's, like, it always happens this way except for occasionally.
Okay.
So, thank you.
So Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, so if I'm hearing this correctly, what we really need to do is schedule four, four different site, well, I guess, four different site visits because Tewksbury would be technically a site visit, obviously. And then simultaneously, whether they're the same days or not, schedule at least two sessions here where there's interviews for those four candidates, whether they're combined or they are broken up into four separate nights. And then, so that's for, at least for a maximum of eight, right? Because they could all be separate days at the end of the day. And then the final thing is a deliberation day where the school committee is deliberating and ultimately coming to a conclusion.
I think almost. The one thing I would say is the school committee could do a site visit to District A
Okay.
and come back that night.
Yes.
And have an interview.
Which would be the minimum of four, basically.
Yes, so you don't really need eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Minimum of four, maximum of eight plus the deliberation, right? Okay.
The only thing I'd like to add is having just gone through this process for the screening, we did two interviews per night, and it was a lot. It felt, and I think doing a site visit, meet and greet, and interview, I feel like that would be a full day. To think that we'd add a second interview?
Yeah.
Would really probably not be great.
I don't disagree with that.
But that's just my own...
I don't disagree with that.
I think in the interest of fairness to the candidates, that would make sense too.
Yes, I agree. So do we want, should we share dates with you?
Yeah, so I think that the two big things that I need tonight, and then don't let me forget to ask you about questions for the interviews, are four dates that I can talk to the candidates about visits, school committee to their district. And I think I can probably work with Gail to figure out the other side without needing your involvement, except I do need to know what nights you could do interviews. And, yes, that was the other thing, the nights for interviews.
So do we think the 25th, which is the Monday, is that off the table or should we consider that date? We can start there.
I'm going to look at the educators and say that, my guess is that coming back, like all the, to have the districts sort, to have the districts sort of disrupted with the site visits going on the same day the kids are coming back from vacation, probably not the wisest decision.
I'll second that recommendation.
I would too.
Thank you. So now we're looking at the 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th. It's Friday.
Friday would, I mean, I've done interviews on Saturday mornings. I've done interviews, so...
Can I just offer, Madam Chair, we have May 3rd in between the window, alluding to my colleague, Mr. Parsons, in order to try to be fair with everyone, I think Friday's not much different than a Monday.
I agree.
To truly be fair to all the candidates, I would feel much more comfortable. I foresee us hopefully getting those four people, candidates, in here. Those are going to be four nights for us to have meet and greets, nights for the public to come in to talk to these people, and then us to have plenty of time to give a good thorough, you know, interview and not have to worry that, you know, it's the end of a long week or it's the start of a new week, so.
Okay, so are you proposing the 26th, 27th, 28th, and the 3rd?
I'd be more than happy to propose that if that works for everyone.
Any other thoughts?
And this is for school committee to visit?
Please, to have the candidates here.
Okay.
And then we'll have the meet and greet and the interviews.
Okay.
Because we all need to be here for those four dates.
Yes.
The Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, next after returning, and then the following Tuesday between the town meeting nights.
Okay.
And then, because I think we don't all have to be present, you know, we can offer up those days of which we can go and have a site visit somewhere else. I think the most important thing for the five of us is to make sure we have those four dates available so everyone can get the same amount of time in front of us and in front of the community at the meet and greet so people can come in and actually, if they care, you know, to see who the candidates are and...
Okay. I'm fine with the 26th, 27th, 28th, and the 3rd for site visits and interviews, if that works for everybody?
I would prefer the 27th, 28th, 29th, but if it works for you guys, I'm not going to split hairs. And the 3rd with that too.
The 29th would be a Friday.
Yeah.
And I believe this...
I think, yeah, I think the 28th and 29th was the date of the win play, so if we could do just one of those days versus two of those days, I think that would be just better suited just, again, just, I guess my opinion.
That works for me.
Actually, you're right, the 29th, we wouldn't be able to meet at the high school because that is the day of the play here.
Yeah.
That would be difficult.
Yeah.
I think to...
One more thing that I know, the CPAC has their meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday, the 27th. And I believe they have this room. I don't know if that matters or how that, like, if that impacts where we meet or how we...
Good point.
We can certainly share LGI 2 as well if we need to upstairs.
Okay.
I think we can make that work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least everybody's in the building too that night, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if those work for you.
Yep.
Most definitely.
So through, Madam Chair, would, so is the next step then for you to go back to these candidates to see if you can shuffle with their calendars as well for those dates, both in their district and then coming to here as well? Is that the, okay.
Yep. So do you want your visits there to be the same four days?
I would think so.
Okay.
Can I add with the one caveat that, as long as it's okay with my colleagues, that maybe we ask for a half a day site visit there?
Yep.
So...
Because it's time to get back and prepare.
Okay. So then the next thing I'm going to ask you is who would you like to see when you go to the districts? So generally, unless the person is a superintendent, you would speak with the superintendent, so their boss, right? School committee members, generally some parents, teachers, central office staff, and maybe some municipal officials that they work with. Sometimes with, we may have to think a little bit about how efficient you want to be or how many people you want to see if it's a half-day, right? Don't have, sometimes school committees choose to see students, sometimes not. So those would be the big groups, and even within those groups, you might say, with the teachers, we'd like union leadership. With the parents, we'd like to make sure there's CPAC representation or PTO representation or something along those lines. Then the candidates put together a group, put together those groups for you to talk to. I think with the information you got ahead of time, you sort of have some questions. You might think of a few questions just to get the discussion started, but generally, once you're in those meetings, they become more of a conversation. It's not like you're interviewing those people, you're more having a conversation with them. So does that make sense?
Would you like us to just start individually giving you?
Yeah, sure.
Groups, okay?
And we'll see where we land.
So I'll start with you, Mr. Sullivan.
Well, just one follow-up. What typically do you see? Obviously, this is new to us as far as groups, you know? You mentioned, obviously, different stakeholders, you know, what's kind of the norm that you see?
So, so school committee members.
Yep.
Parents, teachers, central office staff, municipal officials, and again, if they are not the superintendent, the superintendent, those would generally, those would be the most typical groups one would see.
Well, I'm certainly okay with those groups. Obviously, you know, with parents, I think we would also maybe like to speak to some PAC people, you know? Not just CPAC, but regular PAC. I think that's an important stakeholder group for us to be able to talk to. But other than that, I think what you have is sufficient to me. My other follow-up, when you talk about other municipal employees talking like a town manager or something, and I assume that's just to try to garner how they would work?
Yep.
In that relationship? Okay.
So certainly the superintendents already have that relationship that you could talk about, and generally, assistant superintendents have some sort of relationship with town officials as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Parsons, would you like to add anything?
Yes. Are there any queries or other kind of...
Those don't happen until after someone's hired.
Oh, no, I just mean for us to see a classroom with students in it, do we have to worry about anything like that?
Oh, generally, you don't tour. Generally, the groups are brought in to you to speak with.
Okay, so it would be unusual to just say, like, observe a class?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bringing in students, is that...
Sometimes, yep.
Okay. I would like to meet with students and staff, for sure.
Okay.
And staff, teachers included.
Yep, okay.
Is that all?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Okay, okay. Mr. Russo?
I mean, I think my colleagues here have hit, have hit sort of the, you know, the biggest sort of interest groups. I think it's also important, and I apologize if someone said it already, but meeting with the special education director of those districts, because I think that's, you know, that is a, you know, sort of hot topic and certainly in Tewksbury and I think across a lot of districts in the state. And...
So I was kind of lumping that into central office?
Yep, perfect.
But like, I can make sure to say, and please include the special education director.
Yeah, and understanding how those candidates, you know, interacted with those, with that particular individual, I think is important. And then I apologize again if someone else said it, but union leadership, I think, would be critical as well.
Okay.
That's all, yeah.
Okay. I think, like I said, like, I think you've all said, I think you've covered all the topics, and I think the list that you have here is a sufficient list. I don't have anything additional to add to this list, but I think prioritizing the ones that our membership here have mentioned, superintendents, teacher union, representation, special ed, all of the ones, parent, PTA, PTO, leadership, I think those would be pretty important as well as central office, but nothing new to add to the list, so.
And I agree, I concur.
All right. And you prefer that it's more on the half-day side than the full-day side?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That was actually going to be a clarifying question I had because there's a lot of different stakeholders there, and if you're, I think, Ms. Presser, you had mentioned, you know, usually 45 minutes maybe with each sort of interest group. I would imagine that you'd bring them sort of one group at a time, and if we've listed eight or nine groups, potentially...
Seven.
Seven, okay, seven. Exactly, thank you. That's, that's, that's almost a seven-hour day. So, I mean, do we need to consider cutting that down or should we consider combining maybe certain groups potentially? Again, and maybe it's up to, Ms. Presser, I don't know if you have a recommendation there, or maybe one of the candidates, you know, may be able to...
So what we can think about is if some of the, so some of the groups, like, the superintendent is only one person.
Right.
Might be able to make that a little bit shorter.
Sure.
Students might be able to make that one a little bit shorter.
Sure, sure.
Municipal official might be only a person or two, so we can, maybe we can play a little bit with the time.
Okay.
Maybe we can either combine or play with the time a little bit.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, why would we want to do a half-day visit? There's just no discussion around it. I'm just opening the floor to discussion.
Sure. Any thoughts?
I mean, I, and I don't want to speak for my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, but I think sort of maybe the rationale there was because, you know, after that day of that site visit, whether it's a half-day, full-day, then we're coming back here to be a part of a meet and greet and then also conduct potentially an interview which, you know, could last a few hours or a couple, at least a couple hours as well. So I personally don't have a preference. I think we should do the diligence that's required as a part of the role, but certainly open to other suggestions or opinions.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I agree. I don't think we need to limit it and say we're doing a four-hour day or a seven-hour day. I think based off of the district and their, what their administrator's able to put together and such, I do think it'd be important to be mindful of the ones that are an hour maybe away from here and getting to and from to make it back in time for what we're trying to do here as well would be important.
I'll keep that in mind.
Anything to add, Mr. Sullivan?
No, that was my, only impetus was right, just being able to facilitate it all, not necessarily choosing a half-day over a full-day, but just that we're mindful, that we, you know, respect everyone's time, and that's all.
My only thoughts, I liked your idea of, you know, being mindful of some of the groups that we're meeting with, and I agree, because some of them don't need to be all exactly the same amount of time.
Okay.
Just one last clarifying question. What would, like, one of these full days scheduled as it look like? We're at the school, half hour before they start, go through their school day, that's around three or four, and then...
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, like, what would, like, one of these days, site visit, return here, interview?
So, I mean, so generally, the, you would have, I think you would have ample time to get back because if you're ending somewhere around the end of a school day and the meet and greet isn't happening until early evening?
Right.
Or, you know, directly before an interview, then you'll have time to get back?
Okay.
Before you have to worry about it, if it's...
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And actually, Madam Chair, sorry, one last question that I just thought of. Ms. Presser, if I, if I heard you correctly, one of the finalists, I believe you said, has also been named in another district as a potential, as a finalist, actually.
Yes.
Is there any risk that we run losing that candidate? I don't know how fast or slow.
There's always a risk.
Yeah.
From what I know, their timeline is pretty much identical to your timeline.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
So lastly, I believe, one of the wonderful quirks in the open meeting law is that when you're thinking about questions for candidates, that is not a reason for executive session. So in order, so that we're not talking publicly and developing all the questions, what we typically do is ask each of you, and I think you all got a question packet. First of all, there is absolutely no requirement that you ask the questions from that packet. Those are just suggestions, right? Just to get your creative juices started in terms of questions you want to ask. But generally, what we do is ask each committee member to submit questions to the chair, to me, and then the chair and I work together to make sure that we craft interview questions that are representative of what everyone wants to hear about and representative of what the committee has decided it's looking for in a superintendent. Generally, in an interview, you ask a basic set of questions. That's the same for all candidates, but there's no requirement that you can only ask those questions and only ask those basic questions. So if there are a particular candidate that you want to dig in a little bit further on part of their background or have additional questions for, you can always ask the chair to ask those questions. What we do is have the interview last probably between 75 minutes and an hour and a half, and try and make sure that each candidate gets about the equal amount of time, so you're not allowing one candidate to talk to you for three hours and someone else for only an hour and a half, in fairness to the, in fairness to the candidates.
Okay. Any questions from anyone?
I have a question.
Yes?
Are the candidates aware of the questions beforehand?
No. That's part of the reason we don't want to, how do you have that discussion so they're all ready with all their answers?
Right. Mr. Sullivan?
When would you want that information, Ma?
Good question. So if you're, I would say, maybe a week from today?
Okay. What's the date there?
That's the twentieth.
Okay.
So, what do you think, three questions, five questions? You've been through this process before.
So, we had, with the screening committee, there were twelve of us with twelve questions, so what are your thoughts as a committee? Would you like to have two questions per person? That, I think, is very doable.
I guess, is that, if I heard you correctly, that we're allowed to, you know, based on certain answers to those, whatever that number of, we can, you know, there's more discussion and things that can...
You can ask a follow-up, yep.
So, I mean, two, I mean, because in the screening process with twelve questions, I mean, that was generally, what, an hour, hour and a half?
It was a seventy-five minutes.
Seventy-five minutes, twelve questions, okay.
And it filled the seventy-five minutes.
Yeah, I would imagine.
It did, I think, yeah, I think ten would probably be a little more manageable. And I think what's helpful, too, is if you wanted to submit more than just your two, unless you only had those, those are the two that you really want, because there's some overlap, you know, where we might all kind of have some similar ideas. So if you had four or more that you wanted to submit, maybe, and then what we did last time was kind of take questions that were similar or could be combined, as maybe a two-part or something, so that really all the questions seem to fit in there somehow.
And I always have this caveat, a five-part question is not really what we're looking for.
Yeah.
But, so, if it's not like, five questions disguised as one question, that's always help, that's always helpful.
Right.
Anything else?
I'm all set.
All set, okay.
So you get the packets that have the full, you know, the full application packets from each candidate, Gail has them, and if you have any questions, if you think of anything that you didn't think of, then just give me a call.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was one thing that I had seen in, I don't know, some correspondence, do we need to vote to disband or discharge the screening committee?
You can, I mean, they would sort of consider discharge, but if you want to formally vote to discharge them, that would be, that would not be out of order.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. I didn't know if I had to, so if we don't have to, fine.
You've certainly thanked them for their, for their work, which was yeoman's work, and a good job, so.
Thank you, Ms. Presser.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon. Okay, and from here, we have next on the agenda, Citizens Forum. And citizens, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to any item on the agenda? Yes?
I'd like to say a couple things about...
If you could just state your name and address, just...
Lisa Wilson, 315 Lancaster Drive, Tewksbury, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say a couple things, you know, you guys are going to be doing these, the superintendent interviews, and you're going to make a decision with, before we have another meeting, right? Because the next meeting would be May fourteenth, right? So I don't, most people are just getting the names of the candidates now, and people will do their research online, like, as we all do, Google the names and that sort of thing. But I wanted to voice what I feel is some concerns that represent the parents in this community. One is that it is important that the person that you select not take their, not be biased based on their personal political agenda. I think those are things you need to consider. We want transparency relative to the curriculum, especially when that curriculum relates to controversial issues such as CRT, comprehensive sexuality education, and vaccines. We are very concerned with the public school system indoctrinating our children with far-left ideology, which ultimately results in a form of bullying against the conservative, people that are conservative with Christian values. I think these are important things that should be considered. I also think it's important that the parents' rights to govern the medical decisions for their children be something that you consider in the person that you're selecting, in the questions that you ask that person. As we've all been through a lot in the last two years, I think there's a lot of parents in this community that are concerned about who gets selected and how that's going to affect those decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
So, name's Robert Hanley, Two Hillcrest Road, I have a son at North Street. I wanted to talk about something real quick, it has to do with, I guess, the rest of the year schedule. Obviously, the last two years, we, actually, recently, we're seeing all this stuff about the mental health of children right now, and struggling with things like that, and I just feel like something that's like low-hanging fruit, that maybe we could do quickly and soon, is maximize their time outdoors, at least the younger ones. And I'm talking about like, if, I know you're managing learning time, and you have to make up for all these other things, I get that, but I feel like having these children make, have more unsupervised play, be allowed to make more connections with each other that they weren't able to the last few years, is super valuable, and so even if it's five minutes extra for recess a day, like, that's twenty-five minutes at the end of the, end of the week, you know what I mean? That's, or if it's more, whatever, field days, I know this field day thing scheduled, I forget the details, but either way, I think that's something that we could do, we could get people to volunteer time, I'd volunteer time, if, you know what I mean, if it's an hour here and hour there. So, yeah, that's just something I wanted to, you know, get out there, and welcome to the new committee members, and, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum? Okay, seeing nobody, we're going to move to the approval of minutes, and I'm going to ask Mr. Sullivan to do that for us.
Sure. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the March ninth, 2022, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Parsons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have two abstain.
Yeah, we'll abstain, I'll abstain.
Abstain. And the next one, please?
Yep, I'd like to move the minutes of the March sixteenth, 2022, special meeting.
And is there a motion?
I have a motion to move.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And two?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much. And submission and payment of bills, our new clerk, Mrs. Smith?
All right, I move the submission and payment of bills for the payroll period ending March sixteenth, 2022, in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, to be approved and certified.
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Will second.
Okay, and that's a roll call vote, and Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
All right, I move the submission and payment of bills for the period ending March thirty-first, 2022, in the amount of one million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, to be approved and certified.
And do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, I'll second.
Okay, and roll call vote, Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr.?
Aye.
Parsons, thank you, and I vote aye as well, for the payroll period ending March thirty-first, 2022, one million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. My apologies, I didn't do that well. Okay, next, we have our superintendent and staff report, Mrs. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, spring's always a busy time for the district, so I apologize for the heft of this packet, but there's a lot to share with you, so, lots of great things. So first of all, I'd like to just send out some kudos to our Tewksbury Memorial High School. Today, they administered the SATs here at school for juniors and seniors who still wanted to take the SAT, quite successful test administration. On Thursday, tomorrow, April fourteenth, our juniors will also have a college fair in the beginning, the first half of our school day, it's an early release day. I think Ms. Bejoni Smith and Ms. DeRusso will be observing that college fair, it's always a great time, and then later that evening, our juniors will attend the junior prom at the Tewksbury Country Club. Our Tewksbury PAC is working diligently for all-night-long graduation for our seniors of the class of 2022. I implore anyone who can offer their time on June eleventh, on Friday, to help our PAC set up that event, and if you're into chaperoning that event, it starts at ten PM, and it will be at the Wynn Middle School, and it runs until five AM. It's a great time for our seniors, and we really are hoping that we have some parents that can help. Just as a tip, usually, parents of seniors may not be part of that chaperoning, so we are looking for all of our parents of underclassmen, and someday, someone will be helping out your children as well at that event. In your packet, you'll see a thank you letter from the Mith family, presented to the community service Heathbrook Preschool Class. This is a real feel-good letter, that community service preschool donated lots of gifts and toys to the Tufts Medical Center. These toys were offered as great comfort to not only the Mith family's child, but also to many other children who are undergoing medical treatment at Tufts. So we really want to thank you to the community service families for doing this wonderful donation, and with gratitude and love from Frankie, Caitlin, Evan, and Wyatt Mith. All right, also in your packet are several maps, and I'm going to just walk you through these a little bit. These are maps for the demolition, and then the construction project at the center school. So you know, we have moved out of the center school, we've communicated that to all of our families through the district website, through the district newsletter, and we have that directory posted online. But this is why we had to move out. I'm going to draw your attention to the second map, this April through June of 2022. You can see there are lots of milestones to hit. Right now, the center school is in an abatement process, where some materials will be removed before they start biting into it and demoing it. We had a meeting for families that live around the center school area, and for the Ryan School families, so we could just apprise them of the project and these milestones. You will see the little key on this map that shares some of those key milestone dates, and the demolition of the existing center school is slated to take place between May second and May twenty-third. That whole area right now is fenced off and may not be accessed, the Ryan School students are having recess out in the back on the turf field. If you look at June through August, you'll see that fencing now expands, connects to the corner of the Ryan School. The Ryan School will still have access throughout the summer through the side entrance, and that is when all of that area will be graded off and get ready, getting ready for the site work. If we look at August, next page, please, August twenty-seventh through November fourteenth, this site needs to be prepared and ready to accept our students back to school for next school year at the Ryan School. You can see that our parking lot loop for the Ryan will be maintained, the new bus loop will be ready, and all the parking will be ready in front of the Ryan School. That's the plan, so that we don't have to disrupt any of those patterns, if they're ready to go when school starts, and then when we transition into the new school, they are ready to go as well. And then finally, if you look at, and by the way, that is also a period which we call the punch list, for furniture fixtures and equipment and our technology, and that will be happening in the new school while we're still maintaining some of that construction on-site. If you look at the last map, you're going to see, this is November fifteenth, 2022, where the final parking lot area to the right of that page will be complete for the new Center Elementary School. And then you can see that light blue line that goes all the way around on that access road for the parent drop-off, the yellow line around that new parking where the center school once was is the bus loop. We hope to get our occupancy permit right around the Thanksgiving time, and hopefully central office will move in right after that, and then we'll be transitioning our students over, as you've seen in the calendar, right after the December recess. So again, these maps have been shared with families, they're posted online for people to view. Update, the next update is just a real thank you to the Public Health Museum, they're offering a wonderful event for any of our students in the high school level who are interested in health careers or medical careers, and that information is there in the packet for families and students to find. In the next update, you should know that Attorney General Maury Healy offered and hosted a virtual call to action to address hate and bias in school athletics. I reached out to our athletic director, Mr. Drewan, I asked him to please attend, it was virtual, and please, you know, have any coach who would be available at that time during the school day to attend. Mr. Drewan and Mr. Brian Elwood, who was our football coach, they did attend and said this, they sat in on the addressing hate and bias in school athletics, along with Attorney General Maury Healy and Education Commissioner Jeff Riley, they were speakers for the event. The message was clear, athletics is a powerful tool for students, social, emotional well-being, and there is no place for hate, bias, prejudice, and bullying, et cetera, in our schools. We need to better help educate our students and our athletes to make a difference, and this partnered really well with that captain's council that I told you about at the last meeting, and their leadership role in helping students get along much better throughout our district. So I just want to thank the two of them for attending and for all of their efforts in educating our students. Okay, well, within your packet is not only the March full-day professional development day, which you'll see the focus on our district goals, which are improving our efficacy of our professional leadership teams on observable impact in our class, you'll also see some of the very focused PD that was done around literacy, dyslexia, and specific trainings for our behavior specialists and so forth. And that, a small line, very much at the end, our civics teachers working towards that DESI civics project that is coming down the pipe for them. If you remember, I told you the district was going to take the pledge, how would we help stop sexual abuse among students throughout our district if that were to occur? But the biggest piece of that enough course was really identifying boundary-crossing behaviors. Our staff took the pledge, we had almost one hundred percent of our staff participate, it was a great learning experience for all of us. And tomorrow is an early release day for our students, but a full day for our staff for the final scheduled professional development day in our professional development plan. You'll see, again, the focus is on our district goals around social, emotional learning and lesson planning, staff will have time to do that together, and practice using the tool that we piloted this year. You can also see some of that focused PD on dyslexia and special education practices and transition. Well, last week, we administered the third grade English Language Arts, MCAS, assessment, and this week administered grades four through eight. You saw some amazing writers stand before you today, our teachers and staff really have so much to be proud, I'm sorry, our teachers and our students have so much to be proud of, they've been working really hard. You saw some of the practice, and I know you'll probably talk about walking around our schools, but our students are really, this is their opportunity to show off, and I'm sure they did, so I want to thank our students, and our teachers, and all of our support staff in our schools. The last two days went seamlessly, and that happens because of all the preparation all year long. It also happens due to the preparation of our IT staff and our administrators. We were able to step in and assist, and everything was organized to the letter, which really gives a sense of ease to the staff on this day, so, or on these days, so again, thank you to them. And then the final piece of my update is just an event that is so amazing, every single year, and this year, we are back in person, and that is the District Annual Art Show. It will be occurring on Friday, May sixth, and Saturday, May seventh. We welcome, you have an invitation in your packet, and we invite everyone in the community to please come see the amazing artists amongst us. There will be band and chorus concert, as well as a public showing of the artwork of our students, all the way, preschool, all the way through high school. Again, a big thank you to our teachers, they really bring out the budding artists and all of our students, so what a wonderful event, I hope that you're able to make it. That concludes my updates. I'd like to tell you I'm done, but there's lots on all this, it's new business, thank you.
Thank you so much, and so for questions or concerns, Mrs. Smith?
None at this time, thank you.
Mr. Russo?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan?
No, good, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
I have none at this time.
Okay, and I don't have... And I don't have any as well. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And it was also our consent agenda. Do we join motion to approve the consent agenda?
Just before, I just want to add, in this end-of-year calendar of events, obviously, I think everyone's aware, it was very difficult since COVID with learning. We haven't had a whole lot of good days. And I'm very happy that we're going to take one wonderful thing that we got from COVID and we are finally going outside again for this year's commencement ceremony. I thought it was wonderful last year. I thought it was great to be outside, not only to be outside, but it just, it allowed so many more people to go and have access to that graduation day. So I think everyone's a Debbie Downer about hearing about the COVID. I'm glad we at least were able to sacrifice one, which I think is a real positive thing by being able to go back outside and have graduation. So thank you, Mrs. Regan, and obviously thank you to the principal and the assistant principals here that are going to keep that new tradition alive, hopefully so.
Great, especially when it rains as well.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Russo, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Next item here is some of our school committee member report. So the elementary school building committee was represented by Shannon and John. So, Mrs. Regan, you sit on that committee, so is there anything you would want to, I know it's kind of spontaneous, I'm throwing it at you.
I'm sorry, I have to tell you, I was pointing at Dave a little bit here too. I don't know that we heard his update, so you may want to, from the superintendent report, we have missed the business manager as well.
Yes, yes, and Mr. Libby. Anything you would want to add from the elementary school building?
Two quick recognition and appreciations I'd like to put out there. First, our food service department recently underwent two successful audits, scheduled, some routine and scheduled audits. One was a routine of the procurement processes that they undergo. The second was a comprehensive review of the department procedures and policies. And during a time when the department's been faced with, you know, many, many challenges, supply chain issues, commodity shortages, staffing issues, they successfully completed the audit with one minor finding in the procurement side of things. And we've already filed a corrective action plan that's been approved by the auditor at the state level that we'll implement going forward. But I met with both auditors, be it the exit interview process, and heard quotes from both of the, both of the auditors. Great to see people working like this and it's a wonderful department. So, you know, we know that here in the district, but it's always nice to hear from a different person's perspective that they appreciate the effort and the work that the folks in our food service department put in every day. Great to hear from a different point of view. So just wanted to mention that and give them a little thumbs up that they did a great job getting through those two audits at a tough time. Another recognition I'd like to make is to our maintenance and tech groups. They worked so hard getting our groups from the center school moved to the new fire station, a project that we had originally scheduled to take two and a half to three months. Through nobody's fault, we squeezed it in about a 10 to 14 day period instead, getting those facilities turned over from sleeping quarters and a few offices and living quarters to offices for 16 people with internet in each room, phones in each room. We did have some technical issues with phones, but the work that those guys did, nights, weekends, getting everything moved over there physically was just phenomenal. And also have to say thanks to the staff themselves, the people that do the work. You know, they were packing up boxes, lugging boxes out to their cars and driving them down the street. So it was a real team effort to get everybody moved over there and operating over a two-day period and a weekend. So I just want to thank everybody involved in getting that project done and getting us operating and up and running in our new location.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Any questions from anybody?
None at this time.
Okay, seeing none. All right, now I will move on to the elementary school building committee, sorry about that. Any comments or thoughts from the committee members that are here tonight?
I can, I can tell you this, we have finalized our, we have a meeting tomorrow night. We finalized that FFNE list and the, that's again our furniture fixtures and equipment, which includes our technology package for the new school. So very exciting. We've picked out all of the materials and the colors and all of that, so we're hoping to be able to display those boards tomorrow night, but the project's on track. We're very excited, we're very, very, very optimistic that those maps that I share with you are all on time and that we're in a good spot. So as you know, the calendar for this school district revolves around really moving in and now our feet are to the fire with the rest of this year. Not a small, not a small task, but planning, the staffing, the transition, the assignments of class, the training, and the consigliere, our construction team has been just so accommodating, letting us get into that building, doing tours. Some of you I know have already been in there and every time you go back, just week after week, there's, there's more progress to see. I welcome the community, please go out to our ESBC website and really look at the photos and those agenda minutes because it really talks about the hard work going on. So very exciting. Ten months away, I think, are we from moving in, so very happy to say that.
Great, thank you so much. And for the Tewksbury CPAC, Nick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the committee had two presentations. One was from Mrs. Kim O'Keefe. She's a family resource officer from the Tewksbury Police Department. She presented on two useful tools that families could use to support their children. One is called SafeWatch. It's a medical form that families would fill out. The police would have it, which gives them information about a person or a child. So if that child goes missing or is running and they encounter that child, they can respond better. Or if there's an emergency, not only one call, and there's a child in the house that might be triggered by something like a police alarm, responders would have that information beforehand and could address that child or that family more appropriately. That form can be found on the Tewksbury Police website. And again, you're looking for the SafeWatch form. She also discussed Project Lifesaver. This is a bracelet, it's about the size of a smartwatch. It can go on the wrist or ankle, they are waterproof. There's different color straps with different materials if your child is sensitive with different materials, tactile kind of irregularities. These are to monitor your child in case your child is prone to running away. Just something available. If you contact Mrs. O'Keefe, she has plenty of information and is excited to share this with the town. This program's been available, but she said there's a low number of people interested in it. And we also discussed that the Tewksbury Police Department offers car seat technology training. So in case anyone needs training there, such as a babysitter or, you know, maybe like a special educator, that's available from the police department as well. The other presentation was from Rick Pelletier, who we heard from earlier. I don't want to reiterate, he's very exhaustive, in the best way, presentation. He gave updates on some promising tiered systems and services for all students, not just students who are at home. These services would be tiered and available to students in schools. So all students in the Tewksbury district, whether you're in schools or residential or at home, these tiered services are available for you. And all this is with the intention to provide the most supportive and specific and appropriate supports for students and their families, which is really great to hear about. Just to add on to one collaboration that was mentioned earlier in his presentation, Mr. Pelletier talked about WestEd in their collaboration with the special educator teachers in Tewksbury and the PLC leaders there. Really encouraging work on linking the reporting and evaluating of tiered focus monitoring and the effect on achievement. To put that much more simply, are the interventions we are implementing with our students to support them, are they working? So that's very exciting to hear about. And again, all in the service of best supporting our students as best as we can and doing what actually works for them. Beyond that, the CPAC did express interest in advising the school committee in the district and the superintendent's search process. I would recommend to the committee that we communicate to them and have a spot for them at the meeting greets. Other than that, I have no further updates from the CPAC.
Thank you so much, Mr. Parsons. And for the wellness committee, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, the next meeting will be on May 18th. I will have a report after that date.
Thank you. And policy subcommittee, that's also Mr. Parsons.
I have no updates at this time, but I do just want to name that during our reorganization of subcommittees, John Statman was the chair of that committee, so we'll have to elect someone new to that. And then that person can schedule the meetings with the town and all that good stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. The policy changes, proposals, and adoptions, we don't have any right now, old business. I'm going to come back to you, Mrs. Regan.
I'm going to pass the first item on the agenda of old business to our business manager, Mr. Dave Libby.
Sure. So our FY23 budget voting. What I'm gonna ask that we do is table the changes that are included in my memo. The town warrant has already been published on the town website and distributed in the mail and it did not include these changes. So when I talked to the town manager today, he indicated we could revert to the budget detail that we had presented at our March meeting. Same bottom line number that we'll be voting, you'd be voting on tonight. And any future changes we make to budget in May and June, we would do through budget transfers at our May and June school committee meetings. So this, the memo that's in the packet plus the detailed account level information that's in the packet will be re-presented, I guess, in the May, at the May school committee meeting for your consideration to do a budget transfer at that time.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Russo?
No, I don't now because we're going to ignore the changes for now, so I'm good.
Oh, same, none for now.
And Mr. Sullivan?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
I'm all set.
And I'm also okay myself. So at this time, do we have a motion to approve the budget as possession?
I'll make that motion, given I spent time on the finance committee and have gone through this in pretty good detail at this point.
Is there a second?
I'll second that with the addition that we, the motion also includes the actual number. So to piggyback my colleague, I will second a motion to approve the FY23 Tewksbury Public Schools budgets in the amount of $70,685,560.
Okay. And this is a roll call vote, so at this time, Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that the motion passes for the budget FY23 of $70,685,560. And that's for old business would be, that would be us, the open meeting law complaint determination. So I'll cover that. We had a open meeting law complaint that was filed, letter dated July 21st, is that when it first was filed?
Ah, yes.
Yeah. It was, it was regarding July 21st meeting. So this was filed and then we received, we sent our reply through our attorney and then on a letter sent to us dated March 4th, a correspondence from the Office of the Attorney General regarding the open meeting law complaint. I would like to share with the community what the results were. So I won't go through every word, but the gist of it. This office received a complaint from Sarah Steele on September 14th, 2021 alleging that the Tewksbury School Committee, the committee, violated the open meeting law. The complaint was originally filed with the committee on July 29th, there's the date, I'm sorry. The complaint alleges that the complainant was denied access to a committee meeting held on July 21st and as a result was not able to speak publicly during the meeting. Following our review, we find that the committee did not violate the open meeting law as alleged. In reaching this determination, we review the original complaint, the committee's response to the complaint, the notice and minutes of the committee's July 21st meeting, as well as a letter from the Tewksbury Public Schools Superintendent to Ms. Steele dated July 14th. And the facts of the case were, we find that the facts as follows. On July 14th, the Tewksbury Public Schools Superintendent sent Ms., a letter to Ms. Steele alerting that her, alerting her that he would be investigating an incident which Ms. Steele may have entered the doing school classrooms, observed students, questioned staff, possibly taken photographs, and inspected facilities without authorization. The letter further stated, during the investigation period, I am requesting that you kindly refrain from entering any Tewksbury Public School building beyond the lobby area without my knowledge and express consent. The committee posted notice for a meeting to be held on July 21st at 6:00 PM at the Tewksbury Memorial High School in the large group instruction room. The complaint alleges that Ms. Steele was denied access to the committee's July 21st meeting and was denied the opportunity to speak publicly at that meeting. Our review does reveal that Ms. Steele attempted to attend the July 21st meeting and was denied access, nor that she sought clarification regarding whether the superintendent's letter prohibited her from attending the meeting. To the contrary, the committee responds that the committee chair and not the superintendent presides over the committee meetings and would be the person with authority to deny access to a meeting. On these facts, we find no evidence that Ms. Steele sought to attend the July 21st meeting or requested permission to attend and was denied access. We cannot therefore conclude that she was actually excluded from the committee's July 21st meeting. Finally, we address the complainant's related concern that she was unable to speak publicly during the committee's July 21st meeting. The open meeting law states that no person shall address meeting of a public body without permission of the chair and all persons. We offer no opinion as to whether the committee policy guaranteed members of the public the right to offer public comment on matters on the agenda, as Ms. Steele asserts. So the final conclusion was for the reasons stated above, we find that the committee did not violate the open meeting law. We now consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved and this determination does not address any other complaints that may be pending. So at this time, I'll open this to any comments from the committee. Mr. Russo?
I, no comments at this time.
No.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, just a few comments, seeing how we got some very similar complaints shortly I struggle with this a little because, you know, you try to build some relationships with people and you try to serve the community the best you can and then, you know, things like this happen and we're in a place where we're all worried about spending money and money on attorneys and lawyers and, you know, we didn't make much comment about this. I always felt that we were standing on solid ground. Unfortunately, this year, there's been times, me in particular, had to ask people, you know, because of their behavior. know, because of their behavior, not to attend. That was always on them. It was never because I didn't like they would, didn't like what they had to say, I didn't like them, I didn't like the process. And my questions, maybe for the next meeting, is I would like for us to be able to take a look at, through Mrs. Regan, the cost of some of this stuff. This is just one complaint. This was hours upon hours, myself, the superintendent, the lawyers that we had to pay, you know, to obviously get a determination that we know what we already knew, and we have three more in the pipeline. In addition to this, I'd also like to look at some costs of the information. We've got some similar public records requests, and it's just, once again, time and money and resources that we are taking away from our top administrators. I don't care about my time, I chose to do this job, but when we're taking that time away from them, and we're taking resources, which is money, that we could be spending on our children, you know, I think we're at a point where we start to need to look at this and see what the costs are, and, you know, if people aren't going to stop doing that, maybe we need to look at, you know, hiring someone to maybe address some of the stuff, and we're not paying a top administrator in lawyers all the time. You know, the public records requests have been exorbitant this year, you know? So that's my comments. I feel very confident that the three other complaints that were filed two months or so are gonna run the same route, and I think if you take the time and look into it, it's a public document. Like I said, I take no pride in this, I don't, but if you read it on its merits and you look at the other ones that were filed, I just, you know, I think it's, quite honestly, it's just a waste of time and resources. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
So just more of a rhetorical question to the committee. What are we doing to address these parties' issues? Because it seems, just from my impression, filing public records requests in this fashion seems more of an outlet to express themselves because another one isn't available to them. Is there anything we can be doing better as a committee to make sure that these kinds of conflicts or disagreements don't escalate to the point that there are a flood of public records requests? Not looking for an answer, for discussion, just something to think about before we commit to hiring someone to do this as a full-time job. It seems it's the same parties filling in these requests. I'm just gonna disagree with Mr. Sullivan's proposal that we add more finances and hire someone to deal with this. I just think it would behoove the committee and the entire community and be a lot more effective, not only cost-wise, but relationship-building-wise, maybe try a different tact and discuss with these parties more so than maybe we have in the past.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to clarify, I didn't, said we should look at. I didn't suggest that we should hire anyone.
Thank you. Okay. No more questions on this, we will move on to, oh. Did you want to speak to this, Mrs. Regan?
Yes, yes. Madam Chair, the next item in all business is actually one that requires a vote of the committee. This is an update to a previous business item, so it might seem new, but it, we formally, formally voted in Superintendent Christopher Malone to be the Valley Board of Director member from Tewksbury Public Schools. This in front of you is a vote that needs to be taken now to appoint me as the Valley Board of Directors for our district.
Okay. So is there a motion to appoint Mrs. Regan to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And then?
I'm on a roll a little bit here, there's a lot of information. I promised to come back at the meeting prior to the trips to give you an update. You've had this information in your packet, I'm not gonna go all the way through it here. The first of the updates on the trips is the U.S. National Parks. Sorry, Jason, I missed your cue. We have 31 students traveling. The parents and the students have been apprised of all the change and updates and the information, and they have agreed to allow their children to attend. And that trip, you can see, is leaving on Tuesday, April 19th, and coming back on Monday, April 25th. That would be a school business day, so students would not be penalized for their absence. Okay? Can I keep going?
Sure, please.
All right. Well, Mr. Long and Mr. Ware are with us here today, and it would be remiss of me if I did not mention that Mr. Long did not know when he agreed to be a chaperone on the Costa Rica trip, that he was actually going as the next Tewksbury Memorial High School principal. So congratulations to Mr. Long. He will be leaving on Saturday, April 16th, for the Costa Rica trip with our high school students and chaperones, and returning on Saturday, the 23rd. Again, all the safety and health protocols are listed here. These parents as well have been apprised and have agreed to all of those changes and processes and that COVID protection care promise, and will be sending their students on this wonderful trip. Mr. Long is here, if you have any questions or comments for him on that trip. As you can see, we have 20 students traveling out of country, should be lots of fun. Okay? And they've been so patient, I now need to also recognize that Principal John Ware, as well as Assistant Principal Andy Long are here with us just to give you the detail for the pending trip to Washington, D.C. At this time, we have approximately 160 students, 160 eighth graders. You can see four full busloads of students with their chaperones, and the updated details to that trip are also included in your packet. Again, parents have been apprised and have been communicated with on multiple occasions and understand the parameters for this out-of-state trip. So unless you have any questions for the two gentlemen sitting in the back, those trips are ready, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you the date. That trip is happening in May, May 18th through May 21st.
Okay. And any questions from the committee? Mr. Sullivan?
I have none.
Mr. Parsons?
Safe travels.
No questions, enjoy your time.
Mrs. Smith?
No, no questions, thank you.
No questions for me at this time.
And I have no questions, but I would like to say I appreciate the amazing communication. I do have a child attending one of these trips, and the communication from the school has been fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And new business?
Okay, on to new business. If I, if I may, I'd like to take the handbooks out of order, Madam Chair, where, when administrative staff is here.
Please.
So let me start only so that they, if they need to leave, they'll be first in the list. So this is an annual event, right? You get the change memos to our handbooks. You've already approved the handbook in the past. My apologies in the copying of the handbooks, it appears you got the odd pages to two of the handbooks and the even pages to one of them, but the changes are minimal. If I, if we look at the win, you see the change memo. These changes will include the naming of the new assistant principal, once we know who that is, as well as the dates corrected and then adjusted times. So very typical changes, nothing you haven't seen before. These get posted online, lots of dynamic links actually, so even some of the information you see, you'll have to wait till it's posted or look at the old one that's already online to get all of that information. So can we take, do you want to take them one at a time and give your blessing on them, or should we go through all three?
Well, do we have any questions?
No.
Then I think all three.
Yeah.
Okay. The next, let's go backwards then to the Tewksbury Memorial High School handbook. This one has a few more updates. Again, the first update will be a letter from the new principal welcoming all of the students. That will be one of the first pages in this new 22-23 handbook. You, I'm not gonna go through all the bullets, you can see the multiple changes that'll happen. You have the full handbook in front of you, you can look at the posted one online right now if you want to delve deeper into any of those links. But if you have no questions on the high school handbook, I'll move on to the Ryan.
Okay. Any questions?
All righty. And then finally, we have the Ryan School handbook. Let me go to that in my packet. Very few changes here. Again, it's, it's the approved school district calendar dates and changed times, those are the things that will be included in the handbook. I do find it very exciting through our ESSA grant and some of our budget funds, counseling services will be highlighted in the new Ryan handbook. We've heard, you know, multiple times throughout this school year and through some of the speakers even tonight, this counseling service is deeply needed at all of our schools, and we're proud to say that we're building that department at the Ryan. So you'll see some of those red line changes in this handbook.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Okay. So do you need a vote for approval on that?
We usually do because, you know, policies and dates and calendar dates are in there, and that is all under your authority.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve?
I will, I will make a motion to approve the high school, Win Middle School, and Ryan School handbooks with the changes as presented.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Win Administration, for waiting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on new business is the register period. Once you've established and voted on that school calendar, you know we divide that calendar up into four register periods, and you can see we usually wait around the winter holiday time, that, that quarter heavier, knowing that we may run into some, there's disruption in that quarter too with all the breaks, so we have some extra days built in. And I just wanted to draw your attention to term three, and you can see the subject to change pending days missed due to inclement weather. It's that term three where sometimes we grab those extra days from term four and put that in there. So if you would please vote on this register period, we can publish this as well.
Okay. Any comments or thoughts? Is there a motion to approve the 2022-2023 register periods?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right. Now, hand in hand with calendars and handbooks, this next item does require a roll call vote. This is the last day of school for this school year, the 21-22 school year. You can see we had two snow days, in Jan., one in January, one in February, and at the recommendation of the superintendent, the last day of school will now be Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. This last day of school will adhere to the half-day schedule as noted in the memo.
Any questions, comments?
I guess just one general comment. So is it, is it the understanding that the day before the Monday, which is the Monday, is, is a holiday, I think it's Juneteenth?
Yes.
So that is an observed holiday on the Monday, and then the children will come back basically for that half-day on the 21st, essentially being the last day?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the final day of school is June 21st, 2022, as a early release half-day?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's important business, we have, oop.
Yeah, can I, I'm sorry, can I just, actually, we need a roll call vote with the last day of school.
Oh, we do.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much, okay. So this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mrs. Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Now the motion passes. Thank you.
And I will go back to the first bullet item, and that's the Innovation Pathways Grant. DESI offers grants awarded in the Innovation Pathways designation. We're a designated Innovation Pathway district. Previous IP grant was $75,000. This is an additional $15,000. The additional money needs to be spent by this June 30th. The money needs to provide opportunities for students in our pathway designation of engineering. We will work with UMass Lowell to provide a camp program that will expose students to various engineering. And I do wish Ms. Wilson was here, because this is a question, I know her, and I talked about where the, the goal of this grant will be to expose students to various engineering career pathways. A lot of our students don't know what that means when they say, "I want to be an engineer." We will work at putting together a proposed program with details relating times and costs. There'll be preliminary details, and transportation will be provided. Students who are already interested in our Innovation Pathway program already at the Tewksbury Memorial High School will be given priority to participate in this potential opportunity. I really need to thank Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien and Ms. Best Derry for keeping these types of career exploration grant dollars coming in for us students.
Any thoughts or comments?
No, and other than just, I think that's great that this grant has been, you know, been extended, and, you know, I can't wait to hear some, some of the great things that we had a little break.
Okay. Mrs. Smith?
Oh, no comments, thank you.
And Mr. Sullivan?
No comments.
Mr. Parsons?
Love to hear it. I have no further comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, this next item does require a roll call vote. The inter-district school choice law, general law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, requires all districts to accept incoming school choice students unless the school committee votes not to participate. The school committee is required to take an annual vote. I am recommending the school committee vote not to participate in the school choice program. I'm offering this recommendation for these reasons, the work associated with the construction of our new elementary school building project, and the uncertainty of continued operation of our schools. School enrollment would be another reason. And as I said, this item will require a roll call vote of the committee.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. Parsons?
None.
So?
Nope.
No?
No, none at this time.
So a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
I vote that we follow the superintendent's recommendation, and that we do not participate in the school choice program.
Okay. So an affirmative vote would be in agreement with what you said. Mr. Parsons?
Correct.
I will also affirm that.
Okay. Mr. Russo?
Yes, aye.
Yeah, I concur as well, affirm.
And I vote aye as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the school committee representative on the elementary school building committee. So we have had this past year, Mr. Stadman and Mrs. Demos have been the representatives on the elementary school building committee. So with those two positions now vacant, there's two considerations. One, we would need to vote somebody today to take that position. The other consideration is that Mrs. Demos has been on the committee since the start of the committee, which has been a decade?
Yes.
I think she started as a teacher.
She did.
Then a community member, and then a school committee member.
From the statement of interest through the project, she's been highly involved, absolutely.
Yes. So, you know, I would ask the board to consider her being, to stay on that committee and do work on behalf of the school committee as well. But then we would also, I would entertain any interest on the committee by anybody that would like to fill another role or conversation about how we should move forward.
Madam Chair, I agree with absolutely, I think it would, I think it's easy to have Mrs. Demos continue. I also have some interest. I think it would also be good to have someone currently in the school committee. Been doing this five, six years now, I certainly wasn't as involved as Mrs. Demos, but I live in the neighborhood, I see the construction every day, I'm a licensed construction supervisor of the Commonwealth. And it's really one of the reasons, one of the driving reasons when I originally ran was actually helping to see the project, you know, go through, get voted on, and so I would definitely have some interest in certainly being part of that committee if it's the, if it's the will of the board here today. And I would also support either way, Mrs. Demos being able to stay on as well, so.
Okay. Mr. Parsons, any thoughts, comments?
I agree with Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Demos joining that committee.
Okay. Mr. Russo?
No, I would also agree with my colleague, Mr. Sullivan. I guess maybe just one follow-up question to it. With the school coming online officially and kids and, you know, children and staff being in the building, you know, in the upcoming school year, January, I believe, is the time is the timeline, is that committee planning to stay together for the foreseeable future past that date, or?
Mrs. Regan, you would know better, but I, my recollection from the high school committee was that that committee did stay together for?
Period of time.
An extended, a little bit of time afterwards.
It, it really depends, but, you know, the lion's share of the work is really getting through to the opening, the occupancy permit, the grand opening.
Yeah.
And then there's small details that happen, especially if there's any budget left. But generally, the committee's work after the opening is?
Predominantly done.
Yeah, there's minimal work, if any, after that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
Oh, no, I agree as well with my colleagues that Ms. Demos and Sullivan would make good representation.
Okay, and of course, this is all pending the approval and appointment by the Select Board, correct?
Just with regards to Mrs. Demos, because she would serve as a designee.
Okay.
A school committee designee.
All right, so is there a motion to move forward?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Demos and Mr. Sullivan to represent the PSC, uh, VC on behalf of the school committee.
A second?
A second.
I guess, I guess just to clarify, are we making a motion to put Mrs. Demos as a designee to the Select Board, or are we actually approving her to be a designee? Doesn't she have to go before the Select Board, and they make that approval?
So I think we have to vote?
Yeah.
For that to happen?
Okay.
And then it goes before the Select Board for approval?
Thank you.
That's how I understand it.
Okay.
Mr. Sullivan, yes?
I believe so.
Okay, and is so, and I have a motion from Mrs. Smith and a second from Mr. Parsons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for volunteering.
You're welcome.
It is kind of a big lift.
[laughing]
Thank you. All right, and school committee subcommittees. So if anybody could take a moment to, at some point in the next, you know, few days or week, to reach out to me and whatever your interest might be in some of our subcommittees. Certainly, there are, you know, committees like the Elementary School Building Committee, the DEI, where we voted to appoint a representative when we were asked to have somebody on those committees. But our personal subcommittees, which would be what we give our, you know, reports on wellness, the CPAC representative, you know, things like that. So if you want to reach out, let me know kind of what your interests are, so we can kind of try to divvy up some of the work and get going on trying to move forward and some of the stuff that we should be doing as a committee. That would be great. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. And school committee matters of interest. This is my favorite, and I will, I'll start with you, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, just a personal congratulations to Mrs. Smith and Mr. Russo. I'm really excited to get to work with you guys, and I think you're gonna bring some real new, fresh energy to the committee. So if there's anything I can ever do, my door is always open, my phone, I'm more than happy. But I'm, I'm excited for you guys, and I'm excited for our district and our town. So welcome, and thank you for putting yourself out there and running, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mrs. uh?
Great, and Mr. Parsons, any matters of interest?
I'm gonna steal Mr. Sullivan's words and just express the same kind of excitement. I feel really good about the future with this committee and this district. Glad to have you guys aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, great, and Mr. Russo?
I guess just from my standpoint, I just would first like to thank, first of all, the residents of this town, you know, for believing in me and taking a stand to vote me in. So I really wanna just extend my, you know, thank, thanks for that. And then also, you know, extend a thank you to Mrs. Regan for, you know, allowing, you know, Mrs. Smith and myself to be able to tour some of the schools the other day and interact with teachers and students from all different fronts, talking to some of the food service staff and observing some of the lunches taking place, and some of the interactions that, you know, really haven't been there for the last couple of years, and, you know, because of a lot of different reasons, of course. And then also being able to tour the new center school last week. I thought that was great. And, you know, being someone that has been there for the first time, it's, you know, seeing the amount of progress that's been made. I can't wait to sort of see the additional, you know, progress points that are made over the next several months. So I just want to extend that thank you for taking the time with us the other day.
Pleasure. And Mrs. Smith?
So I too want to thank residents and friends and family. I think it was an overwhelmingly emotional experience to go from the start to the finish, from, you know, revving up and doing all of the work and to, you know, to end that night with surrounded by friends and family, to find out you're on. It's just an incredible experience overall, and one that lasted a while after. So, you know, I'm glad to be here. I'm happy to be here and excited. I too want to thank Ms. Regan and the staff at the Ryan, the WIN, Heathbrook, and the Trey Hand schools for allowing us in to the schools the other day to, to sit into some classes. We had a really interesting sit-in during one of the classes where they were doing local government and local law. And Mr. Sullivan, your picture was up on the board as we walked in, as they were talking about roles and responsibilities of a school committee. So it was really interesting, and hopefully we can bring some of those students back here to talk to us about what they've learned or what they can, what they can learn from us. I also want to do a call-out to the PACs. This is a really busy time for our parent advisory councils. They're hosting fun runs, field days, ice cream socials, and all those awesome end-of-year things. So I just want to give a huge shout-out, because a ton of work goes into planning all of those events and volunteer time, full days at the schools sometimes. So I just want to give a shout-out to our PAC parents for all the work they're doing with those.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
And the only thing I have to add is I am looking forward to the shows at the end of the month, Mom and Me at the High School, and it's already been mentioned. And then the WIN School Drama Club is doing The Internet Is Distract: Oh Look A Kitten. And they will be performing that, but then following their performance, they do take that to a competition. So I think that's kind of exciting. I also would like to congratulate the Trey Hand thespians. We, a few of us had the opportunity to go see Peter Pan, and that was fantastic. I mean, kudos to the principal, all the staff, the volunteers that put that together, because that is a big undertaking with some young kids. So I want to say thank you for that. And I think that's about it. I had a couple of other things, but hopefully, maybe next month we'll cover, you know, some more acknowledgements. There's a lot of good things going on, so it's, it's hard to condense them all down.
There's a lot of good going on.
And future school committee meeting dates. So we have May 11th, 2022, June 8th, July 20th, August 17th, which is also the school committee admin workshop, which is at 3:00 PM, and then there's followed by a regular meeting. And we have our future subcommittee and advisory committee meeting dates. We have the Elementary School Building Committee on April 14th. The Tewksbury CPAC Business Meeting is April 28th, or actually, was that? That was changed?
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
To the 27th, and May 19th. The meeting actually on the 27th is also going to be held in person. I think they're trying to do that as a hybrid with a small meet and greet ahead of time. So if you don't know anything about it, check out their Facebook page or ask to get their emails. And they're also meeting on May 19th for their elections, and then June 16th. The Tewksbury CPAC School Safety Subcommittee is TBD. The Wellness Advisory is on May 18th, and the Policy Subcommittee is TBD. So any future agenda items that anybody would like to mention? Mr. Russo?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
No, none at this time.
Mr. Sullivan?
Madam Chair, just to add also, we will be messaging out, we will have some additional school committee dates. There'll be special meetings, just as a reminder of earlier, April, what are those dates? April 26th, 27th, 28th, and May 3rd. We'll probably be, hopefully, if Dorothy can get them scheduled, meet and greet with each candidate, and then the public meeting that takes place and the interview with the school committee. So I just didn't want to be remiss in leaving that out.
No, thank you.
And I have nothing on the future agenda items at this time.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes, just one request for an agenda item. I'm just interested if we could get an update from Central Office about our enrollment and free and reduced lunch. I know those numbers of families enrolled directly impacts our foundation budget in a big way. I'm just wondering if it would be possible to just see if the pandemic disrupted any trends that you were seeing pre-pandemic and to present. I imagine it's gonna be reassuring, but if there is any dip in free and reduced lunch enrollment, just because lunch was federally funded, is that correct?
Just to make sure I heard you correctly, did you say our enrollment and the free and reduced lunch percentage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I would just imagine that the federally funded free lunch that has been offered might de-incentivize families to sign up. So I'm just curious how we're looking there.
I don't have exact numbers, but the, we were looking at this for a survey we had filled for the state, and the numbers were slightly, no, pretty significantly higher than last year. I'll get you the numbers, though.
Okay.
We looked at this this week.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we add Ms. Doug Mugford to that conversation as well? I haven't seen it all yet, but I did hear out there through the legislative grapevine that there's some people advocating to continue that program. So it might be nice where, it'd be good to get stuff from Rick. I would like to hear from Ms. Mugford as well, where she?
The House Budget concluded an extended, extension of the free lunch program through next school year.
Okay.
So if it passes the Senate in the same manner, it would be extended at the state level through next school year.
Okay.
Great. All right, thank you very much. And I have no future agenda items I'd like to mention. Would anybody like to motion for an adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Okay, all in favor, a roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Meeting is adjourned at 9:12 PM.